Called meeting of the North Reading School Committee to Order for June 19th. First order of business, public input. I can pretty much guess we don't have anybody here to provide public input unless Cindy, or Dan, or A.J., Kathy, or Jason want to make public input. No, I don't think any of them do.
One's coming.
It is that was lost, but I had to.
And here's Mr. Buckley.
You have now taken over the late person.
I mean, it would've run in, but it would've been ruined there, so.
Do we have public input? Okay. Okay. So next we'll.
For the record, what time is it?
Six thirty-two.
All right, okay.
Six thirty-two.
Next, we move to the student report, and we no longer have student reports until September.
Correct.
Correct?
September 25th.
September 25th.
The first one.
And we'll have new, several new students next year, correct?
We do. We have four new students, and then Geraldine Kaya Tamadum and Michael Tyrell will be back.
Okay. Next, continued business, MSBA SSBC.
So I had indicated, I did not have a lot new to report to you, although I did receive an email today, and I have a feeling that, from Joanna Krip from Gilbane, with a status report on some of the punch list items, and quite honestly, it's seventeen pages, and I have not reviewed it in enough detail to speak about it tonight, but I did, I wanted to acknowledge that it was received today, and that I would expect it would probably be a subject of discussion at the SSBC meeting tomorrow. But a couple of things that I did think were important enough to pull out is that there is supposed to be, as you know, we're preparing for the mandrel pole, the grinding of the road, the paving and such, and that there is a meeting scheduled, I gather from this email, with Dow, the company that's done the drainage work, to review the plans so that they can be kept up to speed on the schedule as well. But beyond that, I think I would prefer to wait until the meeting is held tomorrow on the Secondary School Building Committee without speaking in detail about the updates to any remaining punch list items.
So we don't have a date? Do we have a date yet for the mandrel pole, or sometime?
Yes. It is June 26th, I believe.
Okay. A week from today.
Right. So it's, next Monday, I believe, the 26th. And then the paving and such is scheduled, with the grinding first, on July 20th, 20th and 21st.
Okay. Any other questions? As John said, we have a SSBC meeting tomorrow.
Correct.
So.
Five thirty.
Our meeting in July, we should have much more of an update, and hopefully we're getting.
I think July and August are going to be, you know, pretty important months to pretty much do a close.
We're marching along, marching along toward closing the project.
Correct.
They pretty much have a due date of the 15th.
August 15th, correct.
Right.
Is there any pre-meeting tomorrow?
No.
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 Five thirty.
And there was an email from Chuck Arucci today that did not indicate, just to remind me, that did not indicate a pre-meeting.
Okay, next, we have the school improvement plans, and we have Mr. Lepret and Ms. O'Connell from the high school and the middle school. Is Kathy going to go first?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Which one did I say?
If you use the.
Thank you. I did freeze. Thank you. So I just wanted to first introduce, they're not here tonight, but my school improvement team for the 2016-2017 school year. The teacher representatives were Carla Lister and Jean Walsh. The community representative was Amy Luckowitz, and my two parent representatives were Sandy Garnis and Lania Casino. And I appreciate all of their help and guidance as we worked to implement the 2015-16 school improvement plan, as well as to write this plan. Highlights from this past year, and I just have to say publicly again, our building is absolutely amazing. We're very lucky every day that I walk through the halls, especially in this warm weather, and the building is comfortable, the technology is outstanding, the students are happy, the teachers are just feeling like they finally have a middle school that is truly 21st century. So I just wanted to say again, thank you to the school committee, and thank you to the town of North Reading for this amazing building. It's truly a blessing. Other highlights are implementing year two of MTSS. MTSS is an acronym for the Massachusetts Tiered System of Support. It's intervention time. So we were able to offer academic support for students performing below grade level in math, reading, executive functioning, which is educational jargon for organization, which is key in adolescent development, study skills, and resiliency. This year, we offered a kind of a grit intervention, working with students around their self-esteem and goal-setting. So that's something that we're very proud of, and that we implemented in the second year of. Additionally, we conducted iReady diagnostic testing in math and reading. In the previous year, in 2015-16, we only used iReady for math, and this year, we introduced it for reading. And I'm sure the school committee is a bit familiar with the iReady tool, but it provides instant feedback. So when the student submits their test, it immediately tells you where they are performing, at what grade level they are performing, and if they are below grade level, exactly where in that grade they are performing, and what standards they need work on. It's a pretty amazing tool. So again, this year, we implemented that in math and reading, pre and post, in September and June. Additionally, this past year, we implemented the first year of a PBIS framework, which is another fancy acronym. PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. So just like in the second bullet, we focus a lot on academic interventions. The PBIS initiative focuses on the social-emotional piece, and we continued with our social-emotional learning lessons once a month. We call them care days. So once a month, we had a social-emotional lesson that was created by a team of teachers and school psychologists, and we, this year, for the first time, we included a mindfulness component. So just like any regular lesson, there is a warm-up, and an activator, a hook kind of, for these social-emotional lessons, and this year, we used mindfulness as that hook. So like a three-to-five-minute, just de-stressing, kind of calming exercise to set the tone for the social-emotional lessons that we did monthly. Additionally, we had our amazing Alice in Wonderland performance. Our award nominated, I think the awards are coming out soon, for the middle school production, so we were nominated for several awards. We had our winter and spring concerts, our March Madness basketball tournament, a terrific talent show. We have some amazingly talented students who are brave and just put it all out there on the stage. Again, highlighting the Performing Arts Center. It's such a great place, such a wonderful forum to have these activities. We also had Geography and History B. And this year, the History B was first year in a long time that we've participated, and our students actually made it. Three students traveled to Atlanta, Georgia, to compete nationally. One sixth grader and two eighth graders competed in the History B. And as a former history teacher and History Day winner when I was in middle school, I think it's just wonderful that we have students that are interested in this type of activity, and teachers, Mrs. Jones runs those two activities. We have teachers who are willing to help and champion those students. Our Washington DC trip just ended. Everyone came back. Everyone had a great time. They arrived back Friday, early Friday evening. Later on tonight, you'll hear a brief presentation by Mr. Maloney requesting your, the school committee's approval to again go on that trip for the 2018 school year. We've used a new company this year, and we were very pleased overall, extremely pleased with the service and safety they provided. And part of their program is to get fundraising and things going early, because typically we come to you in the fall to ask for your permission. They are already asking us to get the ball rolling and to begin thinking about the 2018 trip, which is why we're coming tonight to talk to you. Mike Maloney will be here. We have a field day scheduled for our sixth and seventh graders down on the turf on Wednesday morning. It's a traditional kind of old-school, by homeroom. The students go through different types of activities, and then it ends with grade-level tug-of-war. It's fun. Kids enjoy it, and then we walk back up for lunch. And then Legacy Day is a celebration of the eighth-grade accomplishment of moving on and graduating from middle school, and that day is Wednesday morning. Art begins on Wednesday morning with an award ceremony and a certificate of completion for all students leaving grade eight, and then they have a wonderful day filled with a very small address by their, for most of them, their new principal, A.J. Lepret. They also receive their memory book. There's an eighth-grade video, a catered lunch sponsored by our PTO, and an afternoon of opportunity to go to various different activities run by teachers. All of that's happening on Wednesday, June 21st. And then I also just wanted to mention that I co-facilitated a mindfulness study group for teachers at the middle school and high school with Jess Buckley and her intern. Can't think of her interns.
Julie.
Julie. I couldn't think of her last name. So Jess Buckley and I and Julie ran a mindfulness study group with 12 teachers who volunteered from the middle school and high school to participate. It was a great opportunity. We read the book, Growing Up Mindful, and we talked about ways that we could incorporate mindfulness activities into our own personal lives and into our work with students. It was a great success. And then, this year, in the seventh grade, we piloted a Chromebook cart-based pilot, where every seventh-grade content area teacher had a cart in their classroom all day long to use to implement technology in a meaningful way. This is different than what the other grades had been doing, is that you would sign up to take the cart to your room, and if any of you have ever taught, and I taught for ten years, what you think you're going to do on next Tuesday is ultimately not what you do on next Tuesday, and so with the calendar model, you have to sign out the cart and say, okay, I'm going to take it to my classroom on Tuesday, with great intentions of doing, you know, a meaningful, wonderful activity. But it's very challenging with students, you're constantly adjusting your instruction and reviewing, or going back to something, or moving faster than you anticipated. So having the Chromebooks in their classroom was a wonderful way to get them to really change their teaching and to implement the technology at any moment. They didn't have to, you know, go sign out a cart. So that was a really great opportunity, and I know we were here last week. Dr. Downs and Dr. Daly were here to talk about the next steps in technology for the 2017-18 school year. So those are just some highlights from this past year. My goals for this year that the team helped me write are focused initially on teaching and learning as part of NRPS 2021. I arranged my school improvement plan based on the district's goals, so under the heading of teaching and learning, my biggest concern and where I've put a lot of effort this year is improving those MCAS scores. So we will be looking at the preliminary data as soon as it becomes available from the spring of 2017, and setting our goals to improve the SGP, the Student Growth Percentile, in all of the tested subjects. In English, which is the first goal, in science, which is the second goal, and in math, which is the third goal. But just to speak to science for a moment, we, this past year, continued our implementation of the new science standards. So in 15-16, we implemented the new science standards into grade six, and then in 16-17, we implemented them into grade seven, and then in 17-18, we'll implement them into grade eight, which will coincide very nicely with the changes in the test for 2018. Next spring, there will be a hybrid where the new science standards will be integrated into the test. So we feel very prepared for that, and actually participated two weeks ago in just a tryout of some of those new types of questions based on the new standards, computer-based. So we focused a lot this year on improving our science scores, and I'm really hopeful that we will see the results of that with the spring data when it becomes available. So then, goal four, as you know, I asked last year for permission to check the climate levels at the middle school, and now that has become, or is a district goal for all schools to check the climate levels. So we did administer a climate instrument to students and staff. In 2016, we gathered those results, and we, you know, looked at them quite a bit, at the, my leadership team, and as a faculty, and with the PBIS team around the social-emotional piece for students. And we administered the climate same scale again this year, and I just actually today got the results, so I haven't had a chance to look at them, but it's nice to use the same tool. It's different students, because we, you know, our eighth graders last year moved on, but same staff, two grades of the same students, to see any trends and patterns. Typically, we say it takes three years of data to really say that there's a pattern or a trend, but just having the two years, I'm excited to look at the new 2017 data. And again, climate, if you are not aware, can be thought of as how people feel when they come to school, students and staff. Are they, do they feel safe emotionally and physically? Do they feel that they are able to collaborate with colleagues and peers? Do they feel that there are rules in place to keep them safe and able to learn at a high level? So all of that is part of goal number four. And then the second strand is technology integration, which is part of the NRPS 2021. So we are working very closely, as you know, with Dr. Downs to implement, to help implement the district's instructional technology plan, and I feel like we're working very hard and have some great ideas for the fall with the one-to-one pilot for our will-be seventh graders, and then moving that cart model to the eighth grade. And I feel confident that we are doing the very best we can to allow teachers to learn. And I wanted to say last Monday night that it's, there are two types of changes when you think about change, particularly in a school, there are technical changes, which are the logistical, operational things, and then there are adaptive changes, which is really transformative, how you change the way you do things every day. And I think our teachers have been really great about both pieces in the seventh grade, changing technically by implementing the Chromebooks, by adjusting to now, you know, a new kind of way to have the students bring them home every night. But that's just the technical piece. That's the logistical piece. They've been extra, you know, I think wonderful at changing the way they teach. That's the adaptive piece, changing their whole approach, their whole pedagogical approach to incorporate the technology in a meaningful way. So it's one thing to have a Chromebook and just use it for word processing, but they're doing so much more than that. And part of that is taking advantage of the digital learning specialists that we have, and again, I thank the school committee for supporting that. But teachers get nervous. Again, I taught for ten years. You want to use technology, but you're afraid something's not going to work. You want to create this lesson, but you're not exactly sure what technology is out there to help you do that. So we have great digital learning specialists who push into classrooms. I see a lot of, you know, co-teaching, where the digital learning specialist is there to offer technical assistance and to help the kids with the technical piece, but the teacher's there to offer the content expertise, and it's just, it's great. It extends into our librarian. I know that in January she, or February, she was here to present for our middle school presentation to you, and I think you saw some of the great things our librarian, Lauren Walton, has been able to do. So that's our first technology goal. We've been trying in the second one to make ourselves part of the school, and we bump into the high school all the time, and I think A.J. and I have done a nice job of sharing the spaces, but we try to get, we try to get them in, the middle school kids, into all of the spaces. I'm so pleased with our video production class this year. I wish Dr. Daly were here, because he and I had the opportunity to go down to the television studio last month and see a live broadcast where the kids were, I mean, it looked like NewsCenter5 to me, and it was just, every piece of equipment was on, and these are middle school kids, and they're, you know, they're switching the green screen, and they're, they just, it was great to see that room being utilized. So I'm very pleased to have the video production course. Going back to science for a few minutes, one of the things that I wanted to work on with our eighth-grade science teachers to help with the test scores was a real intensive review. If you know, with science, it's tested at fifth grade and eighth grade, in high school obviously too, but, so the kids learn sixth grade and seventh grade science, but they're not tested until eighth grade. So that's a lot of information to hold on to and process. So this year, we did a very formal review of sixth and seventh grade in here. So the two eighth-grade classes came in here, each, you know, each block. The two eighth-grade science teachers co-taught together, some of the, just a real nice opportunity to use this space, to have 50 to 60 kids in here, almost like a college-level class with two teachers. So we do try to use the space as much as possible, and again, I said earlier, I'm just so grateful to have these spaces, and I want you to know that we are using them. And then, third, we are continuing to prepare for the administration of the computer-based tests. This year, eighth grade was tested on the Chromebooks in math and English. From a logistical perspective, everything went very well. We were extremely supported by our digital learning staff. I was very nervous about that technical piece of having everything be on the computer, but it, I don't think it could have gone smoother technically. We haven't seen the results yet, but we will be continuing to, because that's the way that, that's where the state is heading, to have the computer-based testing. So we'll be continuing to work with our digital learning staff and our students to get used to taking tests on the computer. And I don't know, the last time you took a test, any of you, but the last time I took a test, it was on, you know, it was paper and pencil. So to, for kids, even our current kids who are native technology users, they're used to paper and pencil tests. So to switch over to computer, there's a change there for them, for their thinking, and to remind them that even though you're doing it on the computer, you still need to use scratch paper to show, to figure out your calculations, that kind of, write a rough draft, or write out, you know, a graphic organizer. It's still important for them to know that they, although they're putting their answers on the computer, they can still use paper to do the, kind of, the processing. And then our last area is student support services. This, again, ties with NRPS 2021. I've already mentioned the Massachusetts Tiered System of Support. That is designed to support all students, but especially those students who are not performing at grade level. It's, you know, it's trying to get everybody up to grade level and beyond. So we are continuing to implement that. We're also continuing to implement the social-emotional learning curriculum. And then, I think most importantly, last year, we really made a strong effort to ensure that our programming met the needs of all of our middle school students. So we had some special education programs, two in particular, that were transitioning from the elementary schools, and we made sure, we worked really hard to make sure that those were seamless transitions for those students. We worked hard to keep students in district and to create the programs at the middle school that we needed to, to ensure that the students had their needs met, and that we were able to keep some here. So that's a very important part of the grade five-to-six transition, to ensure that there is a continuum of service for students. Whatever they're receiving for special education services at the elementary level, we need to work to ensure that that continues at the middle school level, and it's sometimes a bit tricky because of the, just the sheer difference in schedules that an elementary school has compared to a middle school. And I think that's it. Yes, that's it. Tried to be brief.
Questions for?
Happy to answer questions.
Julie?
The MTS, MTSS, I know a little bit about it from my son. How do the sections get developed for those students who are not requiring those extra supports?
So for students who are performing at grade level, who do not need an academic intervention, we ask our science and social studies teachers to put together enrichment, enrichment programs that are aligned to the standards. The first thing is that they have to be aligned to either the science or social studies standards, and then we have co-teachers. We use our general arts teachers to work with the content area teachers, science and social studies, to make sure that what the kids are doing is meaningful and engaging, but connects to the curriculum.
And that happens, how often does that occur?
It started in October this year, and we had eight sessions in October, once a week, for 45 minutes. And then again in January, once a week, for 45 minutes, for another eight sessions, and then we had three in May. So about 20 sessions, 20 45-minute sessions. But the idea behind it wouldn't be that the students would stay for all 20 sessions in one subject matter. You'd be progress monitoring to see, ideally, you want to get them to grade level and push them out. And if we were ever at a point, and it would be a principal's dream, where everyone were performing at grade level, we wouldn't need to have the interventions. But it's a time during the day to capture the kids with the certified teachers to deliver the intervention. And just to add to that, the students who are identified, it's based on the previous year's state test scores, and also the iReady diagnostic. So we can look at two different pieces of data. We can also look at if they're current students, their end-of-year grades in those subjects, to use, you know, nice triangulation of data to ensure that we're identifying the right kids for the interventions.
Jerry or Scott?
I hope he has to leave when I saw the.
So my only question was just about foreign language, and a lot of this is just because I don't exactly know how it all works, but it was mentioned that there's an exploratory class in seventh grade that's only one semester. So does every student have to take it in seventh grade?
With few exceptions. Yes.
Okay. And then, so if we were, because I know the school committee has been on the record about wanting to increase the foreign language offerings, and so if it were to increase to another grade, I was trying to understand exactly how it works with no bells and everything, like the sixth and seventh grade have different schedules in the eighth grade, would there be any concerns about reducing, you know, going to, adding another period to, if we were to be able to afford to add foreign language full-time, you know, in the seventh grade? Would there, is that something that would be a huge change to the other classes in seventh grade, or?
The other content area classes would be, there would be a reduction in their time. So right now, they meet math, English, science, and social studies in the sixth and seventh grade, meet for approximately 60 minutes. In the eighth grade, because they have a full-time foreign language, the academic classes meet for 50, five-zero minutes. So that is something to take into consideration. There's no concern with, I mean, there's certainly concern with losing that instructional time, but they would be gaining it with the foreign language exposure. There's no concern on my end from a scheduling adjustment, because it would just be the, they would follow the eighth-grade schedule. It would be easier in some regards, because it would just be a duplicate, pretty much, of the eighth-grade schedule.
Just to follow up on that, though, since they have the exploratory now, wouldn't if we put a full-time, or is that only once a week, or how does that work?
The exploratory meets every other day for one semester, and ideally, we would push that into sixth grade.
Right. What I'm saying is, they're already meeting for exploratory, so some of that time, they're already taking a foreign language. So we would just replace the exploratory with, if we had a full-time course on three of those days, it's probably not as long, though, right?
Yeah, and it's not at that, I hate to get into the craziness of the middle school schedule. The exploratory's not at the same time as the academic classes are. It's during the general arts rotation.
Oh, okay.
So it's sort of in its own schedule.
I got you. Okay. All right. I had a couple of questions, not specifically related to the school improvement plan, but related, obviously, to the middle school. A couple of things we did last year. We added a school psychologist, and I just wanted to get some feedback from you, hoping that's helped with the social-emotional learning and the other things. And then, is this our second year with no leveling except for math? And I just wanted to see if there was any update on how that's progressing.
Sure. So the first question, I anticipated that perhaps I might be asked, and I'm very pleased to say that I do think, from a data perspective, we have seen a positive outcome of having a third school psychologist in that. This is my sixth year, I'm finishing my sixth year as the principal, and the five previous years, unfortunately, we have had hospitalizations for students due to social-emotional, lack of social-emotional well-being, and this year, we had zero.
Excellent.
So can you make that cause and effect? I'm not sure, but that is a variable that played into it, and I think I often found that our school psychologists were able to see a lot of kids and be proactive, and go to a lot of team meetings, and talk to teams about students that they were concerned about, that were on the, you know, showing the beginning signs of crisis, and try to get to that immediately and contact the parents, have the parents come in, create an action plan, and prevent students from escalating to the point where they need to be hospitalized. So that's one piece of data. I think that if we look at school avoidance, although that, you know, we certainly, we still have students who suffer from school avoidance, I believe that the data would show that those numbers have gone down, the number of students who are uncomfortable coming to school, that this year, the cases of that are fewer. So those two pieces of data, to me, would say that it's definitely been a positive. As far as the leveling goes, this is the first year that the current eighth graders are the ones who have never been leveled for any subject other than math. So we need to still, obviously, look at state data. It takes three years to look at trends and see if, you know, if we're noticing anything in that area. I mean, I personally feel that it's the right decision. I still feel strongly that it was the right decision. It's a best practice for middle school education to heterogeneously group students. I feel that the teachers, again, have made an adapt, that's an adaptive change, to go from homogeneously grouping, you know, where you have levels of students in your class, to mixing them all together and having to meet all of their needs. But I'm confident, and I'm confident that it was the right decision, and we'll have to wait to see the data, to look at the data, to see if, the data, meaning the state data, to see if we see differences in student achievement, what I would like to see, and what my thoughts were, and what the historical data would show for other schools, is that the lower achieving students would rise up when they're not tracked. That's what the studies would tell you, that's what the research says, that those students would, their achievement levels would increase, and that the higher achieving students typically remain high achieving students. It doesn't typically change their achievement levels, but it's a little premature to be able to look at that.
Yep.
On the computer, and I don't know the last time you took a test, any of you. But the last time I took a test, it was on, you know, it was paper and pencil. So to, for kids, even our current kids who are native technology users, they're used to paper and pencil tests. So to switch over to computer, there's, there's a change there for them, for their thinking. And to remind them that even though you're doing it on the computer, you still need to use scratch paper to show, to, to figure out your calculations, that kind of write a rough draft or, or write out, you know, a graphic organizer. It's still important for them to know that they, although they're putting their answers on the computer, they can still use paper to do the, kind of the processing. And then our last area is student support services. This again ties with NRPS 2021. I've already mentioned the, the Massachusetts Tiered System of Support. That is designed to support all students, but especially those students who are not performing at grade level. It's, you know, it's trying to get everybody up to grade level and beyond. So we can, are continuing to implement that. We're also continuing to implement the social emotional learning curriculum. And then, I think most importantly, last year, we really made a strong effort to, to ensure that our programming met the needs of all of our middle school students. So we had some special education programs too in particular that were transitioning from the elementary schools. And we made sure, we worked really hard to make sure that those were seamless transitions for those students. We worked hard to keep students in district and to create the programs at the middle school that we needed to, to ensure that the students had their needs met and that we were able to, to keep some here. So that's a very important part of the grade five to six transition, to ensure that there is a continuum of service for students. Whatever they're receiving for special education services at the elementary level, we need to work to ensure that that continues at the middle school level. And it's, it's sometimes a bit tricky because of the, just the sheer difference in schedules that an elementary school has compared to a middle school. And I think that's it. Yes, that's it. Tried to be brief.
Questions for?
Happy to answer questions.
The MTS, MTSS, I know a little bit about it from my son. How do the sections get developed for those students who are not requiring those extra supports?
So for students who are performing at grade level, who do not need an academic intervention, we ask our science and social studies teachers to put together enrichment, enrichment programs that are aligned to the standards. The, the first thing is that they have to be aligned to either the science or social studies standards. And then we have co-teachers. We use our general arts teachers to work with the, the content area teachers, science and social studies, to make sure that what, what the kids are doing is meaningful and engaging, but connects to the curriculum.
And that happens, how often does that occur?
It started in October this year, and we had eight sessions in October, once a week for 45 minutes. And then again in January, once a week for 45 minutes for another eight sessions. And then we had three in May. So about 20 session, 20 45 minute sessions. But the idea behind it wouldn't be that the students would stay for all 20 sessions in one subject matter. You'd be progress monitoring to see, ideally, you want to get them to grade level and pu, and push them out. And if we were ever at a point, and it would be a principal's dream, where everyone were performing at grade level, they, we, we wouldn't need to have the interventions. But this, it's a time during the day to capture the kids with the certified teachers to deliver the intervention. And, and just to add to that, the students who are identified, it's based on the previous year's state test scores and also the eye ready diagnostic. So we can look at two, two different pieces of data. We can also look at if they're current students, their end of year grades in those subjects to use, you know, nice triangulation of data to ensure that we're identifying the right kids for the interventions.
Jerry or Scott?
I hope he has to leave when I saw him.
So my, my only question was just about foreign language, and a lot of this is just because I don't exactly know how it all works. But it was mentioned that there's an exploratory class in seventh grade that's only one semester. So does every student have to take it in seventh grade?
With few exceptions.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, so if we were, because I know the school committee has been on the record about wanting to increase the foreign language offerings. And so if it, if it were to increase to another grade, I was trying to understand exactly how it works with no bells and everything, like the sixth and seventh grade have different schedules in the eighth grade. Would there be any concerns about reducing, you know, going to, adding another period to, if we were to be able to afford to add foreign language full ti, you know, in the seventh grade? Would there, is that something that would, would be a huge change to the other classes in, in seventh grade or?
The other content area classes would be, there would be a reduction in their time. So right now, they meet math, English, science, and social studies in the sixth and seventh grade meet for approximately 60 minutes. In the eighth grade, because they have a full-time foreign language, the academic classes meet for 50, five zero minutes. So that is something to take into consideration. There's, there's no concern with, I mean, there's certainly concern with losing that instructional time, but they would be gaining it with the foreign language exposure. There's no concern on my end from a scheduling adjustment, because it would just be the, they would follow the eighth grade schedule. It'd be, it would be easier in, in some regards, because it would just be a duplicate pretty much of the eighth grade schedule.
Just, just to follow up on that though, since they have the exploratory now, wouldn't if we put a full time, or is that only once a week, or how, how does that work?
The exploratory meets every other day for one semester, and ideally, we would push that into sixth grade.
Right. What I'm saying is they, they're already meeting for exploratory, so some of that time, they're already taking a foreign language. So we would just replace the exploratory with, if we had a full-time course on three of those days. It's probably not as long though, right?
Yeah, and it's not at that, I don't, I hate to get into the craziness of the middle school schedule. The exploratory is not at the same time as the academic classes are. It's during the general arts rotation.
Oh, okay.
So it's sort of in its own schedule.
Okay, alright. I, I had a couple of questions in, not specifically related to the school improvement plan, but related obviously to the middle school. Couple of things we did last year. We added a school psychologist, and I just wanted to get some feedback from you, hoping that's helped with the social emotional learning and the, and the other things. And then, I don't, is this our second year with no leveling except for math? And I just wanted to see if there was any update on how, how that's progressing.
Sure. So the, the first question, I anticipated that perhaps I might be asked, and I'm very pleased to say that I do think from a data perspective, we have seen a positive outcome of having a third school psychologist in that. This is my sixth year, I'm finishing my sixth year as the principal. In the five previous years, unfortunately, we have had hospitalizations for students due to social emotional, lack of social emotional well-being, and this year, we had zero.
Excellent.
So can you make that cause and effect? I'm, I'm not sure, but that is a variable that played into it. And I think I often found that our school psychologists were able to see a lot of kids and, and be proactive and go to a lot of team meetings and talk to teams about students that they were concerned about, that were on the, you know, the, showing the beginning signs of crisis and try to get to that immediately and contact the parents. Have the parents come in, create an action plan, and prevent students from escalating to the point where they need to be hospitalized. So that's one piece of data. I think that if we look at school avoidance, although that, you know, we certainly, we still have students who suffer from school avoidance, I, I believe that the data would show that those numbers have gone down. The number of students who are uncomfortable coming to school, that this year, the cases of that are fewer. So those two pieces of data, to me, would say that it's definitely been a positive. As far as the leveling goes, this is the first year that the current eighth graders are the ones who have never been leveled for any subject other than math. So we need to still obviously look at state data. It takes three years to look at it, look at trends and see if, you know, if we're noticing anything in that area. I mean, I personally feel that it's the right decision. I still feel strongly that it was the right decision. It's, it's a best practice for mid, for middle school education to heterogeneously group students. I feel that the teachers again have made an adapt, that's an adaptive change, to go from homogeneously grouping, you know, where you have levels of students in your class, to mixing them all together and having to meet all of their needs. But I'm confident, and I, I'm confident that it was the right decision, and we'll have to wait to see the data, to look at the data, to see if, the data meaning the state data, to see if we see differences in student achievement, what I would like to see and what my, what my thoughts were and, and what the historical data would show for other schools, is that the lower achieving students would rise up when they're not tracked. That's what the studies would tell you, that's what the research says, that those students would, their achievement levels would increase, and that the higher achieving students typically remain high achieving students. It doesn't typically change their achievement levels, but it's, it's a little premature to be able to look at that.
And I'm not going to get into this now, but I think as a district, as a state, we just don't do enough with gifted and talented programs. So we'd have maybe after-school, before-school things for gifted and talented students, where if parents or they, the kids themselves, felt they weren't getting challenged enough in school, we could have other things for them. And I know we try to do that, but we don't, I know we don't have a formal gifted and talented program in the district, so.
Well, one thing about having the MTSS block in place, having that, that block that I've kind of established now is something that we do. We really designed it to meet the needs of students not at grade level. But because it's in place now, and we can use the state testing data, so if we look at kids that are placing consistently advanced, if we look at the eye ready data and they're consistently performing above grade level, we have a structure in place now where we could potentially ask teachers to go the other way and work with the kids to support them. That's, I mean, you're probably not familiar with DeFoe, but he's a, a famous writer about education best practices, and he talks about what do you want students to know and learn? What do you, how are you going to know if they learned it? What are you going to do if they don't? But the fourth question that really never gets answered is what if they already know it? What are you going to do? So we have put this schedule in place that is this once a week, 45 minute block that currently is not being used that way, but there really is no reason why it couldn't be. I just, my, my effort and all my time is focused on the kids that are not performing at grade level. But I certainly could now consider adding in, you know, maybe an advanced science course or, or during that time for those students who, it would have to be based on data.
I think it's definitely something we should, we should think about at all levels.
Yeah.
Jerry, do you have anything?
Yeah. Kathy, not so much questions but comments. Again, I want to congratulate you and AJ on the use of the shared spaces. It seems like for the two years that the middle school's been open, that it's been seamless. I'm sure there's been some glitches, but we haven't heard about them. So if we haven't heard about them, they haven't happened, okay? But I, I think you guys have done a great job. I know that was an issue when we were designing the school, when we were building the school, and it seems to have worked out really, really well. And it, I think it is some justification there for the way we built the school with the shared spaces. I'm also pleased to see that your big emphasis on improving test scores, I think that's important. I know some people would disagree with me on that, but I think that's very important. I'm glad that you implemented the video production class, because the use of that space again helps justify, you know, the, the design of the school and the things that we put into that. But how many kids participated in that particular class this year?
I could, I could give you the number after, when I go back, but.
Okay, I'm not, I'm, I'm just curious as to.
I would say conservatively, 300 students over the course of the year.
Really?
But I can get the exact number.
That's great.
To John.
That's great.
Yeah, and the, the class we saw were eighth graders. And again, I'm sure you know that Patrick has obviously a technology background. He, in Wallfam, did a lot of the, the video production work. And he, he just, when he saw what they were doing, he was just awestruck.
Really?
He said, Kathy, because, because being a, just a layman, I, I, they looked cool. He said, Kathy, you, what they are doing is at such high level, when they get to the high school, they can, they're going to be able to fly. Those were eighth graders. So now, you know, we're going to be sending the high school students who know how to use the equipment, and hopefully Allison Kane can, you know, down the road, talk with AJ about increasing the video production offerings. I know there's one course, but perhaps if there's a need, increasing to more.
I'm pleased just to hear that the stuff works. I mean, I didn't know if they put it down there.
It works.
You know, whether or not we had to turn it on or what we had to do, so. And I think, I think that's pretty much, the, the only other thing, again, I was, I was pleased to hear you say how well everything was working in the school. I know you're not the type to complain, so I think if there's anything that isn't working well, you'd let John know. And to hear that the teachers have adjusted and are happy, that's really refreshing, so.
It's a long road.
Yeah, I, believe me, believe me, I, I heard it, and I didn't kill anybody, but I, I heard what was being said. So I'm, I'm hoping everybody's adjusted. That's, that's good news.
Yeah, it's a remarkable school. When we have visitors come for whatever reason, they just can't get over the, the infrastructure. It's absolutely beautiful.
Julie, you have something else?
I had a couple more things. One thing I wanted to say, and I wasn't able to make the performance live, but someone posted on Facebook a performance that the middle school, of the middle school chorus, and I was absolutely blown away. The, the talent, we've come, we've always had, you know, good quality talent, good quality chorus drama, but what I saw five, six, seven years ago, there's no comparison. It was un, what I, well, so I am heard, yes. But it was unbelievable.
Yeah. Carla Lister, I mean Carla.
Yes, it was.
She's done an amazing job.
And it was just beautiful. And back to the serious stuff, science. That test has been an issue statewide in terms of scores. Do you think it's the same reason because the students are taking the courses in the sixth and seventh grade, and then the test isn't administered until the end of the eighth grade?
Well, I, when I taught, I, I taught history, and it was the same thing. So I, it's history when it was tested, was tested at those same grade levels. And it's very difficult for students to retain that information over the course of three years. But I'm just really hopeful that with the new standards and with the new approach to testing students, that we'll see better results. I feel like we got on top of it early. I, in talking with Dr. Daly, you know, we really, I think, planned out integrating the new standards very well and timed it with the new test. So I'm just, I'm, I've spent a long time talking to Mr. Bernard about improving those scores, and I, and I feel like we're, we're getting there. It's, it's critical that, that we do that, I know that.
And the last question I have is actually, it really goes to Michael and John too. And when I, when I see enrollment, and it's down to, next year it looks like 553, I think, is the number. So, you know, I'm not one to look for cutting staff, but when I start to see numbers like that, I wonder two things. Is that a trend, or is that just because that sixth grade class coming in is so small and that's an anomaly? It's 543 actually. And then, if it's not an anomaly, are we getting close to a point where we can take staff from one school and, you know, if we need someone at the high school, we can actually put someone at the high school? I, I don't, I don't know what the, what the critical numbers are though.
I can offer an answer, but I, I think if we believe strongly, which I, I think we do clearly, and, and I'm sure others, in the, in the team model and having licensed teachers teaching in their academic areas, then I think maintaining the structure we have with the staff we have is important. Otherwise, we would run the risk of reducing staff where you might now have a teacher in, who's licensed in math, maybe having to teach some science classes.
But we did have, didn't, a couple of years ago, we reduced, didn't we have extra teachers that, was it the sixth grade?
At the time when we had study periods.
No, but we had, we reduced some teachers, didn't we?
We did, but we, we reduced.
Two and a half, two and a half years.
When I first came on, I believe there had been an addition of two teachers due to the, the class that is now going to be seniors.
Right.
We had 243 students in that class.
Exactly.
So when I came on, my first year, I believe there were two additional teachers added or, or soon thereafter added. But we've since reduced those two teachers.
Right.
Because of the reduction.
I guess the only question I'm getting at is, or the only point I'm trying to get is, is there, is there a number where we can say, well, we don't need, I know we have two teams at each grade. So I guess you'd have to get down to a number of about 75, 80 kids before you could reduce a team.
Yeah, I mean, or, or 100. I mean, the, the best practice would be less than 100 on a team.
Because that's basically 25 per class.
If I'm not mistaken, the following year, the population.
Yeah, so I. That's what I, yeah, that's.
Some of the projections show, so we're about 575 right now, 577, might go down to like mid 530s next year.
Mm-hmm.
Then it might stay at that for a couple of years, but then it's going to, kind of level off, go back up to the 550s and mid 50s.
And I know at the hood, there's one less fifth grade class.
Right.
So that's like.
Oh, this year?
25, 30 kids right there for one of the elementary schools.
So it's not a permanent, it's only a couple of years, and then it's going to tweak back up.
Okay.
And kind of level in the 50s, so.
Scott, you have anything else?
Yeah, I, I have one comment and, and a question. So the comment is just simple. I mean, I have just been thoroughly impressed with Mrs. O'Connell from afar for a while, but it, it seems like at the middle school, a lot of things are piloted, a lot of things are changed, new testing begins there, and, you know, you're continuously trying to make changes, which I appreciate. You know, you tried the Wonder Book a couple of years ago. You've, I know with the leveling and the tracking, you haven't been afraid to make changes at times. And so, just in general, I feel like in the middle school, a lot of, you have elementary coming in, and it's a, it's a very important stage, and I've just been very impressed from afar, and I haven't been on the committee for long, but with some of the changes and how easily you've dealt with it and your leadership over some of these issues. And so I just wanted to say that while you're presenting your, your plan. And then, my, my question is on the special education. You talk about the three specialized programs that we have, Pathways, Connections, and RISE. And can you just maybe speak for just a couple of minutes about what those programs are and, and how, how they've been? Have they been successful? How, how have they integrated and kept, kept students here and connected?
Sure, sure. Just in general terms.
Yeah.
Pathways would be, and we actually have two tiers of Pathways, but those would be for students who are on the lower cognitive level, low average cognitive level. And for some of those students, they receive instruction directly in the Pathways classroom, and then they push out into general arts, of course, and sometimes other content area classes as appropriate. But they often receive, especially math and English, in the Pathways classroom from a special, special education teacher. So that's Pathways. Connections is for students on the autism spectrum, so it's for students who can certainly participate in content area classrooms in the, in the larger classroom, but sometimes need pragmatics, they need support with social interactions, and so that they have a home base where they can go to if they're having a, a particular day that they're struggling, they can go to their teacher and feel safe and supported. And then RISE is new this year, and that's for, for, it's substantially separate program for students on the autism spectrum who are unable to go out for all of their content area classrooms. So they receive a significant amount of their instruction in the classroom from a BCBA, and they, a lot of applied behavior analysis is done there, discreet trials, helping students build their communication skills and their, and their independence skills. So those are, are the three specialized programs. And then, of course, at each grade level, we have students on individual education plans who just require inclusion support or academic support.
And I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't answer the part of your question. One thing I think we should, should consider doing down the road, and it's part of NRPS 2021, is program evaluation. And how, and, and take a look at the programs and see how they need to be adjusted. Cynthia Conant and I have had discussions about what that might look like, but take a look at what's working, what's not working, and then make adjustments as needed. But certainly, I would err to the director of PPS for those changes, as she's the special education expert in the district.
But in, in, so at least one of those, the RISE program, it's likely without that program, we're going to be seeing students from that program, will be out of district.
Absolutely.
What about the other, the other two, the same thing? Do you think that they require a level of service that without those two programs, those students would likely be at, placed out of district?
Yes.
And so we're talking a fairly good number of students, correct?
Yes.
Certainly enough that justifies.
The cost.
Situation like you just said.
Yes.
Even though that's not the driving factor.
No.
It's about in-district programming that I believe is best for those children.
Exactly. Our goal is.
It's a byproduct of.
Over, over 20.
Right. But our, our goal is to try to keep as many students within the community, with their friends, with their peers.
Exactly.
Et cetera. Which is, I think, a lot.
If you, if you did attend any of our concerts, you would see, and even our, our productions, we're a very inclusive school and welcome all students to participate to the degree that they can. And it's wonderful to see, to see everyone just come together and, and be able to perform and feel like they're included.
Saw that in Alice in Wonderland.
Yeah.
So that was, that was great.
Anything else for Kathy?
Great. Thanks Kathy.
Thank you.
Mr. LaPret?
Thank you.
All right. You know, it's our high school's improvement plan, and I thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Just very quickly, kind of similar model to what we saw with the middle school, just an opportunity to see the members of our school improvement, school council, excuse me. Four, four new students on our school council this year, two freshman students, Alexis and Lizzie, Lizzie Barrett, and two juniors, Eva and Tia. And they've been a great addition. Unfortunately, not on our list, as he was not able to kind of finish the year out, was our community representative, Dave McLaughlin. But we had, we've had great parent representation, and two of our school council parent members are here, so thank you. And it's a, you know, it's a good team. It was nice that we had, you know, an opportunity to, to get some more consistent representation, and we've had that happen. Highlights from 1617. Now, one of the things that I, you know, there's a couple of things that, we could have a number of these slides. So in an effort to kind of, you know, present more of a concise list, but nice to have at the top of the list, something that I think is extremely important, is that two of our new hires in the special ed area, in, in fact, the third that I met with recently, have a dual certification in a, in a core subject area. So to have a special ed person who is in a classroom setting, in an inclusion or co-teaching model, to also have the licensure to teach that subject area is a, is a tremendous benefit for that, for that student population, for our programming. So I want to highlight that. Additional items here, the curriculum work that's being done by the English department and the math department, and I'll focus a little bit more on that in a bit later on in the presentation. But some of the assessment strategies that they're working on with common assessments and, and common rubrics in the English department and in the math department with the new online curriculum and the formative assessment strategies that they're using that the, that the online curriculum offers. And, you know, certainly, it's a kind of a staple in, in education that the, the data will confirm that students that are getting kind of immediate feedback are more responsive and more engaged, and that, that online curriculum helps in that, in that experience, so that's a great benefit. Thanks to the Parents Association for their continued support in our enrichment programs. We had Ed Garrity present to the freshman class, and Chris Heron presenting in a schoolwide assembly. Again, I can't thank the Parents Association enough for their commitment to, to student enrichment. And those were certainly different presentations, but tremendously powerful. We also had John Morello present as well, and he presented to the juniors and seniors. So just great, great support from the Parents Association. Our freshman advisory program continued again. We've got subgroups kind of working in stress reduction and mindfulness with, with our school adjustment counselor. Our guidance program remains committed to the Naviance program and Family Connections and offering tutorial videos. In fact, Mr. Rosa, I'm sure will be continuing in, you know, in his new role as the school counseling coordinator for K-12. The change team was in its second year in 1617, offering tech support and, and tech projects. Other items from 1617, continued to our cooperation with the middle school with, with Kathy, which Kathy mentioned. And again, you know, finding that, that most efficient and effective way to use the building to get as much access of the building to as many students as possible, and that, just the, the great lines of communication that exist between certainly the high school administrative team and the middle school administrative team. I couldn't, couldn't ask for anything more from Kathy and Mike. Very happy to say, three straight Highland trophies. And again, that's Cape Ann Award for academic excellence, athletics, and sportsmanship, and certainly a feather in our cap to have won that three years straight now.
They might change the rules so we don't win it.
And move us up a division.
Something, yeah.
I wouldn't be surprised. I wouldn't be surprised. And, and again, to have three straight years on the AP honor roll. And again, that is indicative of more individual tests that are taken during the AP and an increase in overall score. So an increase in the number of tests that are given and an increase in the overall average score. So another, just a, just a, an opportunity to recognize the amount of work that's being done in the classroom and the dedication of our faculty to not just students that are, you know, looking at, you know, a transcript in a, in a college as a goal that is a standout opportunity. But those students that are, that are not bound or limited to what class they, they may enroll in. Because, you know, they're being told you can't take an AP class. Those classes are wide open. It's open enrollment. And I think to a person, students would talk about the benefit that they've had from that course. Even if they scored lower on the, on the exam than they wanted, the, the feedback has been tremendous. So that's certainly something I think that we should all be very proud of. Certainly I am. The new, you might recall the new club we had this year, Seed. Alzheimer's Awareness Chapter on campus has been quite active. As has our, you know, it's a staple item here for our, for our student council. Very active in the, in New England and in Massachusetts. They have returned to their gold book of excellence status, which they just missed last year, but have gone back to, to the gold rating. So that's another feather in their cap as well. And always nice to recognize that the, the girls' spring track now back-to-back champs in Division Four. And I want to be careful to say that's three out of the last four years. So we'll, we'll see how that goes. But also, again, as I mentioned, a couple, you know, trying to get as many things on the, on the highlights list here as I could, but also to, to kind of keep the program moving along a little bit. Sing That Thing and a great, a great fall with Oliver from our Masters team and from the Notorious Group on Channel Two with, with that competition. I hope you were able to see that. It was great to see the kids performing on, on TV. And just to go back to the student council for a minute. We do have two students in Arizona on student leadership opportunities through, through that group. And before I get into the specific highlights for next year, one more. One of my, one of my summer projects on the, on the website is to get a short little kind of a timeline put together of our mock crash and the amount of work that went into that program. And it, an unbelievably powerful experience for, for our juniors and seniors in the, in the mock crash, which was out here. And maybe you recall the helicopter landing just outside the lower parking lot there. But that was a, to have that returned to our, to our kind of student enrichment and programming, the amount of work that went into planning that. Many thanks to the, the number of groups, the fire department, the police department, Claudia Brown, to Allison Kane, to the med flight team. Tremendous. Highlights for seventeen eighteen. And we just talked about this, the RISE programming will begin at the high school in seven eighteen. We have a board certified behavioral analyst on our staff for next year. And this, this kind of obviously is a confirming what we spoke about moments ago. And the idea of keeping as many in-district students connected to their school and their home school. So we have a, we'll have a population at the high school in addition to our Connections and Pathways students. New courses for seventeen eighteen honors comparative anatomy and physiology, honors genetics and bioethics, the robotics academy, and the modern history through film. These courses were proposed earlier in the sixteen seventeen school year and are, and will be running in seventeen eighteen. They've got, they've got some good numbers. Our third Common Application Bootcamp is scheduled for August eighth and ten. Thanks to the guidance department. The Social Studies Department Literacy Initiative continues. And you may recall that we spoke about that back in December. They're kind of reading across the social studies curriculum. Our bridge program will continue in seventeen eighteen. And that's been a tremendous opportunity for students that might be experiencing attendance issues or chronic absences or some health issues that might keep them out of school. Otherwise, get them an opportunity to be in the school in, in an academic and also supportive setting and getting some counseling as they may need. We've got, we just met with the, the Bright Program Coordinator. And Bright is the, is the organization out of Wellesley that essentially started these, these bridge transition programs. So we work with them and provide them some data based on our, on our experiences. And they've been able to give us kind of a, a rating scale based on a rubric that they use to monitor our, our program's effectiveness and to offer suggestions. So a very positive year in the bridge and in its first year. And we anticipate increased enrollment and off-campus internships for the seventeen eighteen school year. And I really, I, you know, I couldn't say more about that opportunity for students to be in those internships and those experiences. So a lot on the docket for seventeen eighteen. And I'm sure there's a lot of questions and things that might be on your mind right now. But I'm going to continue on and just speak about the goals. So we have two-year goals. These are the, these are the same goals that we had in sixteen seventeen. We would like to see the goal as a two-year goal. And, you know, not that you, not that you cannot read on your own, but that first goal talks about staffing. And how do we get that best educational experience for, for our students with respect to personalized instruction and support and identifying what might be obstacles for students? And that comes down to staffing in a, in a variety of ways. We're at a, we're at a place where our numbers are certainly not going down. In fact, we have a, an increase, a slight, but albeit an increase in enrollment anticipated for seventeen eighteen with the, with the same number of teachers on staff. So it'll be a bit of a challenge, but I, I think as we just saw, that people do a tremendous job. Enhancing the educational program around curriculum instruction assessment. And again, providing students with the skills they need and the challenges to meet the 21st century demands and, and what kind of college or career readiness path they may choose. Again, with, with our curriculum work in math, in English, in science, we anticipate as the science curriculum, you know, Common Core standards move through the middle school, we'll be prepared to make those changes. So I, again, our curriculum specialists are working hard to stay focused on their department, department goals and what changes they may need to, to look at to ensure that we have this kind of enhanced programming and experience for the students. Goal three, NRPS 2021, as a guiding document. And not only that we, again, look at what, what our specific students and programming need, but how does that fit with the rest of the district and kind of understanding that, you know, while, while it's the high school, it's not the only school. So certainly the, the high school's input in this document, I think, is, is very valued. And again, serves as a, as an important document and kind of guiding how we proceed. Goal four, extracurricular programming. And I think, again, we've seen the importance of these type of commitments in, in some of the highlights. And I would be remiss if I didn't talk about, you know, again, the Mascar's with Brief Encounter advancing in Drama Fest. In the last couple of years, we've had, we've had our performances, you know, move through the certain specific rounds in Drama Fest, in the, the Theater Guild. So that's one small example, but again, extracurricular programming. We have students in gymnastics now. We've joined a co-op in skiing with Haverhill. So there's a lot going on in, in those extracurricular areas. Goal five, expand the use of technology as a teaching and learning tool. Again, I would go back to the math department in formative assessment. Math dedicated Chromebook carts specifically for the math department. I think Ms. O'Connell spoke about kind of the importance of having that technology that you anticipate using right there at the ready for students. I would say that there's no real change in, in what the, what the work is for the teacher. Certainly what the work is, you know, around the content and the student. The experience is essentially the same work, just different students, different content. So that reliance on that technology to have it in math, those kind of math-specific Chrome, Chromebook carts is, is great. Goal six, we talk about the, the two-year progress report with our NEASC accreditation. We completed our two-year progress report. We submitted that. It was accepted. They, the NEASC has responded with a special report that they are looking for in September that addresses, is asking the school to address if we do not have the advisory model advancing beyond grade nine. How then do we ensure that students have an adult that they feel connected to? What's our process for that? So while we have a large number of students involved in clubs and a large number of students involved in extracurriculars, we want to make sure every student has an opportunity to be connected to another, to an adult. So we have requested some feedback from students on a survey. So grades 10 and 11 took a survey to talk about how truthful that statement is for them. I have another adult that I can feel connected to. And based on the feedback and the data from those two grades, there's probably about 12 to 15% of the students that are saying they can't readily identify. They don't feel like they can do that. So not an overwhelming number, but a number that we want to be mindful of. So I, we'll be looking to address that with some strategies. And I, you know, I think there's certainly some, some opportunities with Power Block and, and, you know, some other, some other things that we can look at to, to feel like that piece that, that the advisory model is so focused on is covered at our school for all, all students, all 802 students and not just grade nine. So that's, that'll be reported back in, before that September deadline. Goal seven, again, working collaboratively with the middle school. I think we've, we've given a number of examples about how that's going and very well. Number eight, continue to meet the provisions of the Common Core Standards for English and Math. Again, those are, you know, that's a goal that, that we need to keep on our list as an important piece of, of the work that we do with respect to MKAS and things like that and the curriculum, the Common Core curriculum. And goal nine, again, emphasizing the importance of the educator evaluation model and ensuring that that's, that's as positive as it's designed to be. I will tell you that the, the opportunities to speak with teachers about the work, about the specific goals that they've developed out of self-assessments that are either individual goals or team goals that, that they might work with across a department or somebody else from another department, that they may have a shared specific interest in a very, very meaningful conversations and the meaningful work that goes into that, that model of education, educator evaluation. And that's going, that's going very well. So those are kind of our three major presentation areas. The highlights of sixteen seventeen, what we're looking for in seventeen eighteen, and our nine goals.
I'll open up to questions in a second. I just want to make two quick statements. One is, any increase at the high school is too many students at this point, given the population there. We have plenty of room, but we have a lot more students there than, you know.
Yeah.
We probably.
Full house.
Exactly. Number two is, you know, the, the high school is doing very well in turning out college-ready and world-ready young adults into, whether it's North Reading or, you know, the service or wherever they're going. I think it's a shame that the budget restrictions have caused the community, the administration, and the school committee to consistently shortchange the high school in terms of the staffing. It's, it's not right. If I was here this year, I would have voted against the budget because it's just not right. But those are my only two statements. I think you're doing a great job. The high school's doing a great job, turning out great kids. I'll start over this side this time. Jerry or Scott or Janine?
Hi, thanks AJ.
Sure.
A question in regards to the freshman advisory program.
Yes.
Do you work with Kathy to collaborate what she uses in her, the middle school?
Well.
For the social and emotional, you know what I'm saying?
I, I, I think we have, I have a sense of, of that programming. I don't, I would say that, that, you know, what, looking, having conversations specifically around what she's doing and around what we're doing. I mean, I think, I, I think that would be a valuable conversation. But with the, with the advisory model that we have in the freshman year, that's a, there are kind of module components. That's a curriculum, so to speak, about specific goals that we want to see the freshmen participate in and specific goals we want to see them building. You know, I think at the freshman level and then kind of moving into that, that sophomore year, that, that we have opportunities. And then that's what the data is showing us is that there's, students are responding with very, you know, very, I will say that with the numbers, when we talked about the, the survey question was essentially, to what degree is this statement true? There is another adult, other than my counselor at the school, that I feel, that I, you know, helps me in pursuit of my goals. Not true, somewhat true, true, very true. So with that not true at about 10 to 12%, and then that somewhat true, true, and very true, though that, that true and very true are probably 65, you know, it's probably like 30 and, 30 and 35%. And that, and that's, that's grades 10 and 11. So with the opportunities to, for students to get connected with clubs and activities and advisors, and again, that. So the second question is, the person that I feel connected to is a teacher, coach, administrator, you know, kind of you, you pick it, a power, a power block teacher. So I, I think, you know, for us, it's, it's that, that, that population that's, might be not, unable to say at least somewhat true. We kind of have a sense of who that is. And we can, we can really kind of identify almost at an individual level where to go. But I think the, the solution for us is to look at Power Block as a model across the board and say, what are some other things we can do within this time to make sure that, that there's at least somebody, you know, who's building on that or starting that relationship a little bit?
Yeah, because I was just curious as to where Kathy is very focused on the social and emotional. It would seem almost like a, a nice transition to have that in the freshmen because they're so used to it from having been middle school. So as they transition in, it would make sense. So that's, I was kind of wondering if, if you kind of go back and forth a little bit on that. So that, that percentage can go up from maybe 10 to 12% that don't feel that connection because, you know, they might have had it in middle school and they come to high school and all of a sudden it's like, you know, all new territory.
Yeah, so we're, right, so we're assuming that, we're, we're saying that the freshman, grade nine, is connected because they have an advisor. So it's that kind of like making sure that that leap.
That continues.
Nine to 10.
Okay.
And, and getting them, you know, kind of connected to something at the high school is, is, is more effective.
And then something just totally opposite. Is, is the mock crash done every other year just because the juniors and seniors see it? So you wait another?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So it's always junior and senior?
That's the design.
Okay.
I know Julie had a follow-up on.
On the advisory.
Yes.
Program. So I've expressed my feelings in the past that it should be a ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade program. So I find it interesting that the accreditation board has now brought that up as to how we're addressing those needs, you know, at all grade levels. Is there any plans to expand the program? Because I feel at the 10th and 11th grades, especially for prepping for college, I don't think a lot of kids make great use of meeting with guidance counselors on their own. And I think kind of a, a small group setting with an adult, with, whether it's a faculty member. But I think someone in that advisory role would be very helpful. And I know I have friends that live in North Andover, and they actually have advisors that stick with the same group of kids all four years of high school. And I've heard nothing but rave reviews come 12th grade, the connections that those kids have made with that particular faculty person. So I was just wondering, it sounds like there isn't a plan, but could that be a plan? Because I think it's a very important piece of high school.
I would say, I wouldn't say there is, I wouldn't say there isn't a plan. I, I, so when the, NEASC has, has always kind of had, that's the expectation. This model, you know, was, was developed and they had felt that it was something that they wanted to see, you know, every, every school account for in some capacity. Now initially they had, they had said, really, this is what the model needs to look like. And recently with some, with some new language changes, they've kind of backed off on saying it's a one-size-fits-all model. And we're going to let each school kind of identify and, you know, through their own, you know, self-assessment and self-analysis, who are we and what works for us, to have a little more variety in how you might solve that problem of saying, you know, how do, how am I, you know, how am I sure that every student's connected with, with at least another adult other than the counselor?
Because I think that percentage, that 10 to 12%, like that scares me. That, that should be zero at this point, you know, and, and I think that's something that we need to...
I, I would say that just because you're, you know, we might say to the freshmen, you have an advisor, but are you connected to that person? They might say no. So, so there's no guarantee that, just because the model's in place.
Sure.
That everybody's going to say it's working.
Sure.
So, you know, I feel that the plan moving forward, I, you know, I, I don't want to give the impression there's no plan moving forward. We're collecting the data, we're looking at what the data, you know, is, is, is telling us about where the areas are that are strong areas and where, you know, if there's a certain percentage that's not feeling connected, what are we doing about it? I think in the short term is to say, you know, we, we might, we might look at something and say, hey, you know, there's, there's a pocket here. All these kids are, you know, for whatever reason happen to be in this subgroup or in this section, so let's, let's work right there. And again, so this is, this is the numbers moving forward. I think it's encouraging certainly on, on my end to say, well, you know, it's not 25%. You know, it's not 30%. It's a, it's a, it's a small group that I feel like in power block is an opportunity, because that's kind of what we're using with advisory anyway. In power block is an opportunity to, to, to begin to create this connection. You're not, you're not in the same power block. And again, it's, it's a little bit of, you know, how, how valid is the data? We want it to be obviously as valid as we can, but just because I'm, I'm not in Mr. Connolly's power block anymore, now is he not my advisor anymore? Right? You might say, well, of course he's always my advisor, you know, that was great. And I might say, well, he's not my advisor, how can I count him as? So, you know, I think there's a little bit of that too, but we'll, there, there's certainly some, some real opportunities to, to, to address it. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not, you know, overly concerned that it's not going to be something that we can, we can handle.
I think it's extremely important that, you know, every student feel that they have another adult they can go to outside the home. I think it's also impossible to ever have that at 100%. I'm also going to guess that a gating factor, if we really want to do this, would be budget because I think staff would be required. I would guess we might need more guidance counselors or we might need more staff to, to implement something like that. I think it would be great, you know, if, that's the model they have in college, although most college kids don't have as much of a need as, for, for a one-to-one advisor as maybe a, you know, kid going through a hard time in ninth or 10th grade. You know, a lot of times you hope the kids in college are more mature and can handle it, although I can say that, you know, a lot of students do use their advisors. So I do hope, you know, and I, I think hopefully you have some plans as, as how we can do that without initially going to a one-to-one advisor at all levels. But I then would say at some point, maybe, you know, we might want to look at that and what that would look like and what it would require.
There is, if you don't mind me, there is, there is a budgetary consideration to that because there were curriculum, there's a curriculum that had to be designed when we first instituted the freshman advisory. So there are some financial implications. I don't think that they're so significant that we can't overcome that, but now that the data has just been collected, you know, I think that's a good first step to seeing, you know, where is it that we might need to make some adjustments to, to make sure that, you know, I'd like to see that number get, if not to zero, as close to zero as possible. I think as, as a first crack on a data collection, I, I think it's a good number, I really do. I think to say that somewhere in the area of 88% of our students feel that, you know, at this time that they have, are connected to an adult in the school is a good number and certainly is a first, first year baseline.
AJ, thank you. I want to thank the members of the council, two of Masi and Deanna are both here, and thank you for your, your hard work. AJ, what are we doing now for SAT preparation?
What are we doing now for SAT prep?
Yeah.
Well, so we, we offer a course at the high school that students may enroll in. We have, you know, worked with, some, some educational group, excuse me, in the past and offered programs through, that some could run through the school. I mean, I, you know, the SAT, the workaround kind of preparing for the SAT is, I don't want to say limited to solely that class. I mean, I think there's, there's vocabulary strategies and, and things that happen in, in English classes across the board and math, you know, math, applications that happen typically in a math class. I think the SAT, I mean, certainly the SAT numbers have been going up. And, you know, the new SAT is out now for, you know, it's going to be kind of its second year going through, so it's second cycle.
We adjusted the class, the prep class.
Oh, yes.
To the new, the new test, obviously.
Yes.
What's the participation rate in the, the class that we offer?
And that, um, how many enroll, how many enrolled, say? Yeah, I'd say, I'd say, you know, so we split the semester.
Yep.
So I'd say 20, 20, 20 to a pop, so maybe 40 to 45.
Should we be doing more to get students?
Well, I mean, some students feel, I mean, again, we, we want to let the, let them take the courses that they want to take.
Yeah.
It's restricted to juniors only.
It's, it's a, it's a juniors-only class.
It's about 25% of the class.
Yeah, so we, I mean, you know, I think those conversations, we certainly have them with students in the guidance department and some students might say, I'm doing this independently on my own or I'm, I'm looking at this, I'm looking at that, or I'm taking three AP classes, I'm not really concerned about the SAT. So, you know, I, I think, I, I think we're, we're, we're looking to address it and I think in the, in the most rational way we can without making the students feel that, that they're going to be overwhelmed by this test when they see it.
On page 12, I was looking and you were talking about staffing objectives. And one of them was to maintain, maintain science laboratory student-teacher ratios, not to exceed 24 students and to support staffing to attain English language arts classes, not to exceed 20 students. Realistically, how close are we to those goals?
Well, I'd say we're, we're, for the lab, the lab, science classes, you know, on average, we're, we're very close. For, for say the chem and the physics on, on the, and the science electives, no, not, 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 not close.
What about the, the English language?
No, I would say we're over that.
Well, well over it.
Yeah.
Well over it. Okay. And I'm very familiar with the participation rate in athletics because I'm on the athletics subcommittee. Are we seeing the extracurricular? Participation stay steady or increasing?
Well, I think with new clubs like, you know, like we've, we, like we've seen, and in fact, there's, there's, there's a, a couple of students that have met with me at the end of last year that we kind of spoke about with a, with a new, not necessarily international travel, but just international club that it's, you know, kind of wants to have a more global view. So I would say, you know, absolutely.
Overall, we're ahead of standards.
It's such a, it's such a vibrant student community and the students are so, I think just prepared to be engaged in something that interests them, that, yeah, that, you know, there's, there's, I, I'm not aware of any kind of drop-off in, you know, enlistments for any student clubs and activities.
And last, we introduced a few new courses last year, as we do every year. How is the participation rate in the acting and stagecraft, the advanced placement music theory?
Well, so, so those are interesting classes because, you know, you, you kind of get into that, that area where you've got a, a strong, maybe intro-level class and for the students that really want to go to that, that, you know, do we offer, do we offer another higher-level course for that class? And if we do, how many of those kind of committed kids want to take it? And unfortunately, sometimes, you know, you might have a great class, but there's four other, five other great classes that are competing against it. And we'll say, you know, with the, let's say, the video production class, which we offer at the high school, you know, and as Ms. O'Connell talks about kind of, you know, where, where would we take a class like that? When there's a, you know, it's kind of like the Mandarin one dilemma. Why am I signing up for Mandarin one if there's no Mandarin two? So, I mean, I think the students that, and we're, you know, we're, there's, there's some nice work being done with Dr. Daly and with the, you know, discussions around, with the guidance department around kind of, how do we get students to a place where they can start to look at creating a, an academic program that's one that they can kind of, you know, really use to market themselves? Never mind just say, this is going to get me into the school, but is really going to kind of tail, put me on a tailored path to where I want to be.
So some of these new classes don't necessarily take off, maybe?
Some of them do not. Some of them do not.
All right.
But they, but they, but it, but again, in general, I will say, the, the comparative anatomy and physiology, huge signups. The modern history through film, very popular.
Good.
You know, and the, and the robotics academy, popular.
Good.
So again, I think teachers are responding to student interest, putting the course out there. It might just take a little bit to get, to get it up and running.
So I'm going to put it out there because I've heard a lot from the community. What is the deal with the tardy policy? It was referenced at graduation and I just want, do you feel that there's an issue, that there's not enough communication for parents, for students?
I will respond to the tardy. The tardy policy has not changed since I've been here.
Okay.
So it's the same tardy, what's in the handbook was in the handbook in 2010. That has not changed.
I think it might go back.
Oh, it goes back.
So I'm just going back to me.
I'm just wondering, I don't have a high schooler, so I've never been through it, but I've heard nothing but questions about it and concerns. So I, I just want a, a better understanding of why that is happening.
You, you want, how can I best answer your question? You want the whole specifics of the tardy policy or?
Or perhaps how there's been issues in, you know, is there a way to fix, whether it's communication with parents or something like that?
So, so school, the, the expectation is that you are in your class at 7:30. That's when, that's when that first class starts. A block or E block starts at 7:30. So if I am coming down Main Street, walking down Main Street with, you know, my, my iced cappuccinos and, you know, and all of a sudden the bell rings and, you know, now, you know, now Mr. Down says, you need to go sign to the office because it's 7:30.
Sure.
You're not going to be in a class on time. But I was in, but I was in the building, but you're not, you need to be in the class.
Sure.
So we, we would say you have three tardies that you can kind of use, well, you know, I, I got a late start or this, that, that, that are kind of freebies for the first 10 minutes of school. If after 7:45 you come into school 15 minutes late, you've missed the first 15 minutes of your first block class, you are assigned to detention, which is 25 minutes, might be the world's easiest detention. And that is to say, you missed 15 minutes of class, right? That's in, that's, that's a significant amount of time at the start of the day, your first, you know, that's going to make it very difficult in that first block to kind of get your, you know, experience.
For just clarification, I am absolutely 100% on board with holding kids accountable as, you know, students. It's just, I'm just wondering where the communication with parents, like why all of a sudden it has come out?
Yeah, I don't know.
I won't say, I'll say this, I think we've heard complaints about tardy policy. Jerry's been on the school pity floor.
I've heard it for 30 years.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no perfect...
I guess for me, I have not, not heard much of complaints or questions or concerns.
It's being enforced. The policy in the handbook is being enforced. It's a, it's the same policy that's been at least 10 years.
I think some of the problem, and again, I haven't looked at it in a while because I haven't wanted to. But I think one of the issues that had resurrected itself again, but it came up a while ago, you have the three so-called excused tardies.
Per semester.
Within 10 minutes of, of your class starting, if you have three, three excuses.
That's right.
But I think what was happening were, at one point anyway, kids were bringing in notes and they were just a standard note from home and they were using those to get excused above and beyond the three. I don't know if that happens or not, but I know that was an issue with people, that kids would just show up late, come in with a note and okay, you're excused. I don't know if that's happening or not.
I think that's what, that was happening at a very significant rate back, I'll say eight to 10 years ago when we rewrote the existing policy to limit the notes that just said, you know, please excuse my son for being late today.
Yeah.
That didn't seem, that didn't seem legitimate enough.
No.
But what I can tell, I'll say to anybody is, the policy that's in the handbook is the policy that's been in the handbook for, I'll say, eight to 10 years and is not, it's not being enforced any differently.
I would, I would agree. I mean, I think, I will say...
You get three excused, you're within 10 minutes.
A semester, up to 15 minutes.
Right.
First semester, so six a year.
Yeah.
And beyond that, we like a, you know, a validation of the, of the reason. You know, sometimes a pa, a child will say, I'm late because I had a dentist appointment. Okay, get the, no from the dentist or the doctor or whatever, something like that.
Right, right. If I'm going to say I had an appointment, if I roll in at 8:05, well, I had a dentist appointment, well, it's 8:05. You know, you should have, I, I want to see, do you have a note? No? Oh, well, if you're at the dentist, I think it's a good idea to bring in the note, that'll help you.
Especially if you know the policy.
You know? So...
So that, that seems pretty, that seems pretty simple to me in that if you have a student who's going to be half an hour, an hour late and they're going to the doctors or the dentist, to have the dentist say, Joe Jones was here for an appointment at 7:45 today, Dr. Smith. That seems pretty simple to me.
Unless your mother or father's a dentist.
Well, that's true.
Well, that, that, so I don't, you know, to, to answer your question, I think that's, you know, it's been said by myself.
No, I appreciate that.
Like Mr. Bernard before, you know, when he was the principal, it's the same policy. We're, we're just asking that students honor it. I think, you know, I don't know how many times you're allowed to be late to work, right?
Trying to build good habits.
Absolutely.
So...
I do think though, there is, I think there is confusion with the policy and that some, sometimes parents think, well, I have a child who's never been late for two years and the first time they're late for half an hour or two hours, they're asking me for a doctor's note. And I guess maybe...
Not necessarily asking for a doctor's note.
Yeah, no, no, I wouldn't say no.
But, but what I'm saying...
It does not always have to be a medical note or a doctor's...
Correct, but what I'm saying is I think parents might get mixed up with the six freebies and they don't understand that the six freebies are only within 15 minutes.
That's right.
That's it.
That's right.
And anything over 15 minutes, whereas the first time or the...
It's pretty clearly spelled out.
Or it's not the 100th time, whether it's the first time or the 10th time, if it's more than 15 minutes, you're really going to get a detention. Are you, you're better have a real reason why it's more than 15 minutes.
I think, I think people are, you know, the detention is, it goes right to, I think what you said, Janine, about accountability. It's just, you, you, you were late, we're going to, you owe us something. You get 25 minutes.
Oh, 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 talking, I'm sorry.
If we had detention, Janine would never be out, right? Be detained.
It's, 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 you know, I think the idea behind the 25 minutes is to just get in the habit of this is something I can do.
Exactly.
This is something manageable and I can take care of it. And therefore it's that, it's, you know, I think it's a, it's kind of a relationship builder, like, hey, you know what? You, you sat through your 25 minutes, good for you, we're all good, move along. And, and again, for the, for the students that, that take care of their, their detentions, I mean, you can, you can see the, them kind of mature along that road of accountability and, and responsiveness.
John's right though, I don't think it's changed in eight or 10 years.
Oh, easily.
It's the consistency of enforcing it across the board. That's what's really important, that it's, that it's consistent because as soon as, you know, i- it changes or...
I'm not worried about that, again.
No, but I'm going to make a suggestion because with my long tenure here, the most questions, comments and complaints I've ever gotten have been on the, the tardy policy, okay? I, I would recommend that somehow you figure out how to call it out every single year. You might have a separate, you might have a, you give each kid a card, a three-by-five card that printed on it is the tardy policy.
The students understand it. The students understand the policy. They know.
The kids are told, bring this home and give it to your parents.
It's funny, I had a, I, I, I used to, when I was assistant principal, have exactly that. I used to have the, you know, the, kind of the student, student attire expectations, just on a half a sheet of paper and just that. And then around the parking, there you go.
I think that kind of stuff would be effective because it's simple.
And just give them the handout, there it is.
Just a suggestion.
Just so you know, put in your pocket, you know?
Yes.
Anyway.
Excuse me, if there's a question, a parent, feel free to contact the school administration.
Yes.
Oh, right.
Not resort to social media first. Contact the high school administration.
Social media is so much more fun.
Mrs. Bailey, do you agree?
Just as far as your, your staffing increases, I saw a band person or someone in the music department that you would like to increase for next year?
So, those are, those are department reports.
Okay.
That when, when a specialist speaks on behalf of the department and talks about things that they would like to have to enhance their programming or that's important for them or is a goal for them, they present it to the, to the, to the school, the school council. And what I think we do, to the degree that we can, is recognize the need and report it accordingly. Now, that's not necessarily always saying that we expect it's the first thing on, on the itemization of priorities, but we want to honor what that curriculum specialist knows and, and has a sense about the improvement of their department.
I'm just looking for what exactly you're looking for for this coming budget year. Like, what specifically do we need to be aware of?
Am I throwing that out there right now?
No.
But I think, I think, I, I like the way this is done because it gives us a good feel for what the department.
Right.
Now, the department may always overstate by one or two people, but it gives you a good feel. For example, one of the things I noticed in music was, the request was a separate chorus director because you have the theater, you have the band.
Right.
And maybe a separate chorus director. When I think about it, is that a full-time position? I don't know, but that kind of makes sense when you look at that. I think, I think the way this is done is helpful, and I think that's a good question because when you read through this, you see a lot of different requests from, from the departments.
Yeah. And I think we try to, what I certainly try to say to the specialists is, is we're not making a wish list, but we're talking about your program and what, you know, what do you need?
Yes, so I have a couple, a couple of comments. So, I agree, agree what people are saying about, this is a very useful document. Now, I know that when the budget is created, Mr. Bernard and Mr. Connolly do a lot to, you know, kind of take these requests from every school and narrow them down. It is nice on the school committee to see the, the broader list, but in many ways, it's also an indictment because, I mean, saying that we're using a chemistry book from fifteen years ago is, is frankly embarrassing when you're on the school committee. And, I mean, I, the one thing I would say is, I'd like to see some sort of general standards. I know, I know in the elementary, we try to say, like, stick to one to twenty at this level and one to twenty-two here. I'd like to see the same thing expanded, you know? I mean, we talked about, you know, one to twenty-four for science and technology and one to twenty for ELA, but there was no mention of, is it one to thirty for every other class or?
I think our goal is twenty-five, twenty-five.
And, and how, how, how are we doing on that? And, yes.
Probably, my guess is forty percent of all classes.
That's a fair, I think that's a fair.
Yeah, I, I don't have that.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying, but just in general, yeah. But, but then also looking at things like, you know, textbooks shouldn't be more than ten years out of date or, you know.
It doesn't change though.
Well, I, I know, nothing's ever changed, but.
The alphabet change this year, I think.
But, but again, I mean, I, I, it was very useful to see this and read this, but it was in many ways also painful to see and read this. And I, I just want to make sure that we can take some action from this. And my, my other comment was just a very, a quick one, but you, you mentioned the new hires were dual-certified with special education in a core subject area. And I guess, my question is, is this a, is this something we're trying to promote more often? And is there, is there, is this something we're going to see more in the future? Is, is there an intention to, when we are able to expand, try to get more dual certification and, and in particular with special education in, included in, in the school? Or was this just a coincidence of who the people were?
Well, I will say that certainly when we look at supporting the, that, what's the best model for an inclusion classroom or a co-teaching model? And, you know, I think we can look at a number of different recommendations around the two educators that are in the classroom. But it should really be defined by the students and what works best for that student population in that setting. So, that being said, if we have two people that we can both say are, you know, eligible and certified to teach the content, one may have majored in it and therefore have a lot more experience in it, but one can certainly say, you know, I, I know this enough to be, to be certified in it by the DESE that we can look at, at, at two content experts per se and one with a background in special ed instruction. So, what's going to maximize that student's learning opportunity in that, in that moment, I think is, is the most knowledgeable people that we can put in front of them, and that's what we're trying to do. I think that, again, to have the student, I'm sorry, the, the, the new hires that we had from, from last summer come in and be dual-certified, and for us to get a sense of, hey, look at, look at the, the change that we can see happening in, in some of these classrooms. And the conversations that the two, the teachers can have around the content area has been tremendous. I mean, I've seen, I've seen, you know, some, some real good work where we might, you know, typically might say, well, the model might best be suited if these seventeen kids go off with the math teacher and work on this, and the struggling six can work with the special ed teacher and kind of do some remedial work. Well, what about if you take it and you split it and say there's twelve and twelve, and you've got a teacher with both smaller groups doing the same thing? And, you know, you have that real heterogeneous, you know, classroom with a smaller setting, you know, instead of saying, well, you know, we've got a really high ratio, student, teacher ratio, because we kind of have one, one core expert and one helper. You know, it's a hugely different dynamic. So, it is by design.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
I know Mr. Maloney is champing at the bit back there to regale us about stories of Washington DC, but I do, we do have a couple of parent representatives here, Marcy Bailey and Deanna. So, I want to know if you had any questions or comments?
To Scott's point about being part of this process, there's no doubt that, you know, as parent representatives or community representatives, we are so proud of everything that goes on at the high school, of course, the middle school as well. But when we do meet with the curriculum specialists every single month, and they talk about how robust their programs are, but how much better they could be and how much more depth and quality there could be and all of those types of things, when we get to the budget process and we're here every year and we hear about what one person that we finally get, when we know that there's so many more people and resources and textbooks and technology that could make these students who are thriving at such an incredible level even more prepared or more qualified or whatever, you want to stand up and scream. When you look up there, you just want to scream because we just sat through an entire year's worth of what we could be doing and what we should be doing. So, it's so disheartening to end up where we end up. But again, the students, the administration, the teachers, the parents in this community rise to an occasion every single year and outperform. But I have to say that, you know, you're right, this is an indictment. And it's hard to be on a, on a council that knows just how much more they need. But that's, again, what we do and why we keep, you know, asking for, you know, the resources. Because every time we get them, the teachers, the administration and the students, they perform at such an incredible level, and it's just so amazing what they do. And the one thing I want to say, just as Mr. Lepret was talking about internships, my son Sean did a senior internship, and he is still, after his freshman year of college, still working there. And it's been an incredible experience for not only him, but for other people to know that that works. And it was great for the company as well, so I just wanted to, an endorsement of that. It's an incredible program, and I hope you do increase it.
It's a great program.
Thank you.
Jerry, Jerry started to. Right, pretty did an internship. I remember that.
She worked at a vet hospital.
Veterinary, yeah.
Well, I don't want to be repetitive, so I'll just say that I echo everything that Deanna just said clearly and leave it at that. I couldn't agree more. The one thing that I guess I want to question or ask you to look at, and, and Mr. Lepret and I didn't have the opportunity to speak about this, but in the advisory model and the results of the survey that only maybe twelve or fifteen percent of students didn't feel connected, in the, the stress survey, I'll call it, for, for lack of a better term, that had been taken last year and I believe was administered again this year, that was kind of flipped. And the, the question may not have been exactly the same, but when we asked students, do you have a trusted adult in the building that you can go to when you have a problem? It wa- it was kind of flipped, that twenty percent said yes and eighty percent said no. Now, it could be who was asked, it could be the time and place, it could be the phrasing of it. But I would ask that maybe you could go back and review those two different surveys and two different questions in tandem to just get a better picture because it confuses me a little bit. Because it seems like the same question, but I don't have them both in front of me, so maybe they weren't.
True, two grades.
So, I, I, I just, because I do think that, I know it never will be a hundred percent, but to the extent that every student we can get to who feels that they have someone, not only to advise them in college and career and all those, you know, routine challenges they face, but that they can come into the building and say, I'm having a bad day or week or month or need, need some advice from someone I can trust. I, I can't think of anything more important. So, that's all. It's been a privilege to serve on the school council. It's been, I'm not going to get emotional, it's been an absolute privilege to be, have my students in North Reading Public Schools for the last, you know, probably seventeen years, and it's, it's been a gift, so I thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you both.
And if I could just, if I could just thank, thank you both for coming tonight, I really appreciate it.
I'm always looking for that next thing to, anybody have any more questions or? I, I had just, just closing comments, you know, common theme, and I think this has run through the last four or five or more of these, is more professional development. And there's some really important areas where I wish we had more money to, you know, some AP course develop, development and professional development, et cetera, and more staff. And I think that's, you know, that's a clear one. Winning a third Highland Trophy, I think, is a great accomplishment if people realize the kind of schools that are in the K-PAN league. There's a lot of really good high schools in the K-PAN league, and for us to win that, it's more than just athletics. It's sportsmanship and it's academics.
Academics, yeah.
And also three straight years in the AP honor roll. I think that's a great honor, and it's great to see the school committee get back to the gold book of excellence. I said it last week, this class that graduated this year was the most well-behaved class that graduated I've seen in all my years on the school committee.
They made a mistake of just bringing one beach ball.
Exactly. Maybe they didn't have enough funds to purchase more beach balls.
And they showed up on time, too.
They did, they showed up on time. And, and it looks like they're doing a lot of exciting things as they leave here.
Speeches were good, yeah. It's a great group.
They were a great, very nice class.
That's it. Thanks, AJ.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ed.
Oh, no, one more thing, no, Molly King.
Thank you.
Mr. Maloney, you don't need the screen?
No, I don't.
So, next we have Mr. Mike Maloney, assistant principal at the high school, just returned from Washington DC, middle school, just returned from Washington DC. And he's going to give us, talk about next year's trip already, as Ms. O'Connell mentioned. The, the, pardon me? Actually, you know, standing up here because the mic, the cable is here, so they'll be able to hear you.
Just want to know how long the baseball game actually was. It was scheduled for three fifteen. I'm guessing it went longer.
If the Red Sox are playing, it's four hours.
Every time.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mike, yours.
Thank you. Thank you for fitting me in this evening. I know this is a, a little bit early in asking for approval for next year's trip, but it's a result of, of World Strides' timeline. And I actually, I told them we need to go slowly. I said, this is, this is new. So, re- two, two reasons tonight, just, you know, to ask for approval for next year and just to recap about my experience with, with World Strides. I, I know we, we made a significant change this year, switching from Capital Tours to World Strides. And I can't, I don't know if there's enough words to, to describe how, how great of an experience it's been for me planning the trip, you know, starting last summer when I, I did my research looking at different companies through, you know, this morning when I, I spoke to Kate, our account manager, about tweaks that we would like to make for next year. Just their, their support and their level of service was phenomenal. We actually had four people working on our account. Kate, who was the manager, Tabitha, who, you know, managed all the rooms and a lot of the logistics stuff. There was Carter, who's our financial representative, and Amber, who was, you know, the, the sales rep that got us on board and worked out the plan. So, you know, from that piece of it, that planning piece of it, to the, to the onsite people. We had, you know, Jim and Jane, who were our onsite coordinators at the hotel. They, they greeted us every evening when we came back to the hotel and waved us off every morning as we left. Just very simple little things that you don't think is a big deal, but, you know, checking in, you know, two hundred and three, one hundred and eighty-five eighth graders and, you know, eighteen staff. It's, you know, just to have the keys separated out into chaperone groups and then into bus groups. It was just easy for me to go, here's your, here's your group of keys, you know, Mike, here's your group of keys. And then they handed it out to their, their chaperone groups, just to, you know, keys that didn't work. It was, it was such a weight lifted this year. So, I'm, I'm very pleased with, with World Strides and, and what they provide us. And I know it was an increase, I know that was noted when we did ask for approval. It was a, a small increase, but it was very much worth the money. The hotel was, compared to last, you know, where we were staying previously, was, it was a five-star hotel. You know, it was out, out at Dulles, right on the airport property. And I was kind of concerned because I knew that's a thirty-five, forty-minute ride without any traffic, but there's a, an HOV lane that we got on every morning, and we were in town, you know, at our, at our stops in the same amount of time when we were staying in, you know, I think it was Arlington or Alexandria. So, it was great. You know, the tour guides were phenomenal, just the itinerary that they put together. We did a lot more than, than what we had in the past from, you know, even switching some things around. We pushed amusement park to the afternoon, and we did Arlington National Cemetery in the morning, which allowed us more time, both at Arlington National Cemetery and at, at the amusement park. And, you know, just, they, they gave us box lunches on, on the bus that day. So, for our ride down, we were able to eat and not waste time stopping and, you know, feeding, you know, one hundred and eighty-five kids. So, that's, you know, I can't say enough about, about World Strides and, and what they gave us in, in our, our parent community. The accelerated timeline, obviously it benefits them because we commit to World Strides earlier in the process, but it also benefits our families where they have a longer time to, to pay the balance of the trip. And it actually allows more opportunity for them to receive the scholarship funds that World Strides provides because they have a pool of money. And as that, as it gets closer to the trip date, that the threshold for the application, so just say it's, it's fifty thousand dollars is, is the threshold, you know, in June. You know, that might go down to, you know, forty-five thousand dollars in August. And so, the threshold gets lower to, to apply for those scholarship funds and actually to receive some of those funds. So, that's two benefits for our families. Spoke to Kate this afternoon, our account manager, asking her just, you know, if she could put together an itinerary and just some estimated cost for this year. And she hadn't heard back from the bus company, that's the big, that's the big ticket items. But I did say, you know, what would the increase be? And she says, it's usually between one and two percent from this year. So, this year was nine twenty-nine, so that's, you know, it's going to be right into that, that, that same area. And like I said, we tweaked a few things, you know, we tried to do the Udo Varhazy Museum, which is out by the airport, we're stuck in traffic going down, so we got there a little bit late. And we, you know, tried to squeeze that in. Probably won't do that next year, just because there's a lot to do. And we left early, we left at five AM, so it was a much earlier start. So, but just tweaking it to make it the, the, the best opportunity for the kids. So, I'm, I'm here tonight just to ask for your approval for the, the DC trip and the local trips, which were a success from, from what I heard, and to answer any questions that you may have about the new company and, and what, what they provide for us.
I've got no questions. The only thing I have is provided, I'm fine provided that whenever you get the itinerary and costs and also what the local trip's going to be, you come back and just present those to us.
Yeah, we, I think you have a copy of what we did this year.
Right.
And it's, the itinerary is going to look very much the same, just with some, some tweaking here and there. And the day trips will probably be. That's what it was like Friday afternoon when we pulled in with the bus.
Mr. Webster, do you want Mr. Maloney to come back to a meeting or are you?
No, no, as long as.
Submit it to me and I'll submit.
He doesn't have to come back to a meeting, just, just so the information, so we have the final.
And she was hoping to get that, she said, if, if I get it by six PM, I'll, I'll, I'll send it off to you. to you. Oh, and just another note, too, about the support and service that they provide, Kate, our account manager, I was actually emailing her Friday, Thursday morning on our way to Arlington, just saying, you know, I'm meeting with the school committee Monday night, is there any way you could send me just a draft of some estimated costs? And she said, well, I'll see you in 10 minutes, I'm at Arlington National Cemetery to meet you, just to put a name and a face together. And so, I was talking to her for 10 minutes there, and I said, well, you know, in relation to DC, where's your office? She says, oh, we're about two hours south. I said, well, you drove up two hours? She goes, well, I have to be, to be honest, my brother does live in the DC area, and I stayed with him last night, but the fact that she came up to me, that's.
Those kind of touches you mentioned are really important, especially the people at the hotel, when you check, when you check in, when you're leaving in the morning, it's a comfort feeling, not only for the adults, but for the kids, to see the same faces and...
The kids enjoy themselves?
So, I want to thank you, from the bottom of my heart. What an undertaking. I would not sleep when I would go to the Museum of Science with my fourth graders the night before. I cannot imagine, you know, orchestrating and keeping everyone safe and happy and excited. Nothing but glowing reviews, the local tour guides that the kids have pictures with, and learning about his culture and how he comes up from Mexico to run these tours, you know, those personal touches really make a difference for the kids, and thank you.
Can I just share a story about McGuire? If you don't mind.
Wait, wait, wait. Julie, before you said okay.
Good one, I don't know.
Just an example of how good our kids are, you know, we tell them, we have all have these in place, you have to have a buddy system, you have to be with, you know, a buddy. So, we were at the amusement park on Thursday, and McGuire brought a friend up, and who wasn't feeling well, because the nurses, they sit at the table, and the kids know where the nurses are, and so McGuire was kind of like, you know, now what do I do? Be with a buddy. I said, come on, I'll walk with you, you know, find your friends, and so we went for a walk, and, you know, they were on a ride, and they couldn't get cell service, and it was, and McGuire, I'm like, McGuire, you probably don't want to be hanging out with your assistant principal for doing something good, right? But it was just, the way the kids act, they made, you know, really do, do us proud, make us proud when they're down there, and the feedback that we get from the tour guides and all the adults that we dealt with are just glowing, so it's a testament to, you know, our North Reading families and the work that our staff does.
Brought them all back?
We did.
It's like the third year in a row.
We left too often. That was pre-planned, so.
They should be here tomorrow.
And I just, I did, I brought some.
Yeah, three years.
You know, the little things that this company provides, it's just a discovery journal that, if you want to just take a look, it's, just gives the kids some information, I handed these out last Thursday or Friday to the kids, and it's just some information about the different places that we go, that the kids can look at, and just.
Another comment before you go, your updating of Twitter was so helpful to know at 8:00 AM, they're heading out, at 12, we're at the zoo. I lived in DC for two years, and after a while, I'm like, they're at the zoo, they're at the Pentagon, they're at here, so just to kind of keep in the back of our heads, okay, this is where they're at, this is where they're headed, I think that was greatly appreciated by the parents of the community.
I have fun with it.
So, they made this available to each student?
Yes.
Yes.
This is interesting, yes.
And it's actually, there's a.
Does it place the back, they can write down about their experience?
There's actually an opportunity for them that Catherine Jones is going to pursue through classes about gaining some high school credit, they just have to do a little bit of work and be on their own. Again, we're just filling them out as well, so it would be an opportunity for them to do some online work, not a lot, but, you know, and I don't, and it's accredited by the six accrediting agencies nationwide, so, yeah, I just, I'm very pleased and happy that we went with this tour company.
The itinerary makes me tired, I couldn't imagine this for five days.
They came back very, very, very tired.
I couldn't, I couldn't imagine the chaperones on this trip doing this schedule for a week. I know I would be tired.
It is so much fun.
The teachers, the teachers and principals and, you know.
It's funny, too, I had the idea, because Dana Sinaretti was this video production teacher, and she had, you know, the camera going the whole time, and we were just talking to some kids at some point, and I said, you know, we should create a student's guide to the Washington DC trip.
That'd be neat, and then you could show it.
That would be great, show it.
Show it, and it was funny, because the things that we tell kids, they don't believe us, right, because they're like, don't worry about your roommates, because you're not going to be in your room, and when you're in your room, you're going to be tired.
Right.
The first thing, the girl, Olivia, and she goes, yeah, I tell you, don't worry about your roommates, because you're never in the room, and then another girl piped up, yeah, and only pack sneakers, not Converse, but running sneakers. My goodness, I think we have a, we have an idea.
I do have one question.
Yes.
I do have one question, because I know that this was an increase over, a price increase over the other service, and it sounds like it was worth it, but in terms of the number of students that attended this year versus last year, do you have any idea, like, what it was, and was it cost prohibitive, did you see a decline in attendance?
Absolutely not, no. We had 185 out of 200, and that's typically right around where, you know, 90 to, you know, 92%.
I will say that there's a lot of, not only does, you know, this company provide scholarship money, but the community provides a lot of scholarship money.
We saw a lot coming over the years for this trip.
I just, and I have to look at the specifics, but we had fewer scholarship requests.
This year?
This year, now whether that's a byproduct of World Strides and what they offer, but we had very few additional requests.
They had the whole year.
We had, built into our agreement, you know, reduced trips for a number of students, so, yeah, I think it was.
My experience over the years has been, if any student really wants to go on this trip, money is not going to prevent them from going on this trip. That's been my experience.
The other side of that is, money's not what prevents them from going. Generally, it's kids that don't feel comfortable making the trip.
She'd be the first one to say that. She went in eighth grade, she wouldn't have gone, because she was just a homebody, and she would have chose.
Yes.
There's some kids that don't want to do it.
Kids just don't want to do it, and that's, you know.
In terms of approving, I would just make a suggestion, I mean, if they are thinking the increase would be 2% or less, if we said if it's within 5% or 4%, you know, as long as they just give us the number back, we could then approve it, because I'd be concerned about approving without knowing what the cost is.
Yeah, I'm not going to go that way. I mean, I'm going to approve it regardless of the cost, because I don't think, again, you know, I'm just looking at, it's about $17.93 a week that they have to put away to afford the trip.
But again, if they later came back and it was 20% more or something, I mean, I'd want to know why.
I guess, I really don't, wouldn't support that, I'd just support a straight approval, because if it comes back something outrageous like that, Mike's going to be back to us saying, we have a problem.
Because there are more than enough companies soliciting us for their services, and, you know, now that we've dealt with a new company, it's, you know.
They want to keep you as a customer.
Absolutely.
They're not going to, they're not going to go up dramatically on a price this year.
You're going to know the price next week.
Right.
I'll know the price tomorrow.
I'm not worried about it, I just want to make sure.
They should be just waiting on Yankee bus lines, because that's what the delay was.
If there's no more questions, I'd accept a motion from anybody but Scott, no, I'm only kidding, Scott. If Scott wants to make a motion, I accept a motion to approve the Washington DC trip for June 2018.
I'd move to approve the Washington DC trip, the eighth grade class, for 2018.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Good job, good job.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Get some rest tonight.
Okay, next we have minutes. Oh, yeah, we got an approval.
Oh, yeah, we did, yeah.
Can I have a motion to approve the middle school improvement plan, please? To accept the middle school improvement plan.
I move to accept, I move to accept the middle school improvement plan.
Thank you, Cindy.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, and now a motion to accept the high school improvement plan.
Motion to accept the high school school improvement plan. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thanks, Cindy. Okay, next, the minutes, we have a couple sets we couldn't approve last week, because we didn't have enough members who were at the meeting. We have the May 1st executive session, which I was not present.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the executive session on May 1st.
So, it's going to either be a second from Jerry or.
A second.
Janine, Julie, because Scott wasn't on the committee yet, so. All right, so we have a motion by Janine, second by Jerry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
It's a three, three zero.
Three zero two abstained. And then we have the same thing with the May 1st regular session minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the open session on May 1st.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Aye. Two abstains, three in favor, two abstains. Then we have the, because Scott can't vote on any minutes tonight, we have the May 30th open session minutes.
I don't care.
I make a motion to accept the open session of May 30th minutes.
You have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, Julie got me.
Give Julie a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero one abstention. And then we have the June 5th minutes prior to our meeting.
Make a motion to accept the open session prior to town meeting on June 5th.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion by Janine, second by Julie, to accept the June 5th open meeting minutes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? One. Was there a one? And then we have the June 12th minutes, there's one thing on the June 12th that I saw, on number three on the first page, it said a meeting is scheduled to take place on Monday, June 12th at 8:00 AM, but that meeting would have already taken place, since the meeting was the night of June 12th. So, it should just say, a meeting took place Monday.
Yeah, I think you took that from my report, right? Yeah.
So, other than that, they were fine. If I could have a motion? Oh, Janine, wait, Janine can't vote on these.
I can, I can make the motion.
But Mr. Buckley can vote on these.
There you go. Move to accept the minutes from June 12th.
You've got to get in practice, guys.
2017, there you go.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One abstention. Was there a one? Okay. Next, we have our pretty close to end of the year budget update.
That's correct, that's correct, Mr. Webster. So, in your packet this evening was the June budget report. Essentially, it's summarizing financial activity through about the, about June 9th, and, you know, as typical, with the reports broken down through expenses and payroll activity, and essentially, not a lot of new information from the May report, but at this point, we are in the process of closing out the fiscal year. As you are, you know, well aware, during the budget development process, we are certainly involved preparing and paying, you know, prepayments for special education tuitions. You know, I mentioned last month, we had planned and forecasted during the budget development process that we would reach an amount of $125,000, and I'm happy to report that we have been able to meet and even exceed this amount, which should help provide that flexibility that I think will be needed to deal with some additional costs or unforeseen costs in fiscal '18. We've monitored utility expenses throughout the fiscal year, and as you can see on the report, happy to report again that all utility expenses are certainly within budget as we prepare to kind of close out the fiscal year. There's still one more, you know, one more invoice where we're waiting to reflect activity through June 30th, but we even have some available funds in this area to repurpose elsewhere, which certainly assisted with meeting our special education prepayment objectives. We've discussed throughout the year, we certainly had some unexpected building maintenance costs this year, certainly around some HVAC and some boiler issues throughout the district. We were able to certainly manage these costs throughout this fiscal year. The food service program closed out the month of May with actually a profit of a little over $13,800, which was a great month for the program. Meals sold across the district were up on average 6%, which was a, which was a great month. With the month of May, that actually put the program's profit through May at a little over $2,000 for the year. So, you know, that's certainly positive, positive news. We will certainly look to hopefully mitigate any loss in the month of June. Typically, June is a challenging month with the graduation and seniors not being here, and there's a lot of lost operating days with exams and so forth, but we hope to mitigate any loss to keep, you know, there's a chance we could break even, so we'll watch, you know, June closely. You know, the program also captured a couple of additional catering events this month with some athletic team banquets, and I thought those went fairly well, there was some good feedback, that, you know, we'll look to hopefully expand and grow upon some additional catering events next, next school year. I think we talked about when Chartwell's presented, that would be an important piece to kind of get over that hump and operate, you know, at a break even program. On the payroll side, there was really nothing significant to report, as I mentioned last month, you know, we certainly have some available funds in some of the salary accounts that can be used to repurpose and assist with, you know, certainly meeting the special education prepayment objectives. So, really, despite some unanticipated costs the district did incur, I do feel that, you know, we are in very, you know, solid financial standing to close out this fiscal year and achieve the carryover funds we had planned on during the FY '18 budget process. Certainly, that, you know, the year's not closed out yet, we actually have until mid-July to officially close, close out the fiscal year, so we have about another, you know, three to four weeks will be, certainly be a busy time for the business office as we try to get in all the final invoices and make some, some final adjustments to some of the open encumbrances to close out, but I do anticipate at the meeting in July that I'll be able to present the final financial report of the fiscal year. I know if you're looking through the report, you see, you know, there's a small projected available balance, but I will say, even though we're, you know, we're looking at, it's June 19th, there will be some, some adjustments and some increases to encumbrances, and even things that might come in over the next few weeks that may not be reflected, so I think we'll, we'll close out the year pretty close to a, to a fully expended budget.
Just want, regarding the food service program, I want to say hats off to Michael, to Chartwells and their staff, and all the workers, and to the appetites of the North Reading Schoolchildren. We've gone from a huge deficit and a huge subsidy that the school district had to put in, to a program that is now profitable with half a month left. Now, it may end up not in the black, because June's a short month, and, you know, we lose the seniors, but I find this to be, this was a bugaboo of this committee's forever, and I just find, find this to be a huge accomplishment, and I know Chartwells has done a lot, and obviously with the new facilities and what they're able to do with the high school and middle school, I think that helps also.
Yeah.
I just wanted to thank you, Michael, for targeting that.
It's been a great success.
Getting rid of that issue. Anything else, anybody?
Well, the only comment I would just say is, with tuition being that much more than expected.
Oh, no, it wasn't.
What? Yeah, that's actually a result of the prepayments.
Prepaying.
Okay, that's only the, yeah.
That's why, that's why it looks like.
Okay, was it $125 or?
So, we actually are at $250 right now, so we almost doubled what we budgeted, and we had hoped to do that, and we do that typically each year, as we, so that is really the reason.
Can you just explain, you're prepaying $250 for next year?
Correct, yeah, $250.
Okay, good. Well, I was going to compliment you and say, great job managing the budget, but never, I'm just kidding.
If we don't, you know.
Don't anybody tell the finance.
If we don't, no, if we don't do the prepaying, if that ever happened.
Oh.
We would be in humongous.
We would, yeah.
Trouble following.
Very quickly.
We would.
So, I mean, that's, that's my fear for next year with, with the budget, with so many cuts to the, the rainy day funds. So, I mean, I think it's next year more than anything, we're going to need the quality, you know, administration of, of the budgets of both of you.
We have the millionaire tax.
It's going to be very tight. And we knew there were some unanticipated expenses that came up at the very end, so we were trying to exceed the amount we budgeted upon that because we, we know what's coming, so.
The millionaire's tax bill will be paid, what taxes?
Oh, please stop, leave me alone.
All right.
Anything else on the budget? Thanks, Michael.
Great, thank you.
No staffing updates, John?
No.
Bids and donations, we have a few.
We do.
I don't know.
Three, I believe.
Want to take these tonight?
Sure. I would like to, I can't even say the word.
Like to make a motion, I think.
Thank you, that would, that would, that would help. With gratitude, an in-kind donation from the Friends of the Hornets Productions at a value of two hundred and sixty dollars to help support the cost for thirteen middle schoolers to attend the Massachusetts Music Educators Association Junior District Choral Event.
A second.
Motion, Ben Nied, second by Jerry. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, unanimous.
Thank you. I'd also like to make a motion to accept with gratitude, an in-kind donation from the Friends of the Hornets Productions, again, valued at eight hundred and fourteen dollars to subsidize the Project Fashion Enrichment Program for the middle school students.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, I would like to make a motion to accept with gratitude, an in-kind donation from the Friends of the Hornets Productions, valued at one thousand seven hundred and fifty, to subsidize a two-part Wicked-themed enrichment program for the middle school students.
Actually, I saw some pictures of that. I think they had an actress in from one of the touring companies of Wicked.
That's correct, yeah.
That was meeting and instructing students at, in the Formia Arts Center.
Correct.
The only comment I have is that I'm jealous.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So this, just, this is a fairly new organization, North Reading, a couple of years old, maybe, two, three years old.
Um, it started, I believe, the year that the middle school was in the old high school. So this is probably concluding its third year, yeah.
That's three thou-, almost three thousand dollars in donations in the, and they, they've done a lot.
Absolutely.
More. We know we have the storage bin.
Correct.
All the sets and et cetera for the middle school.
We're paying for the rights for some of the.
Paying for the rights.
Very, very active.
Some of the shows.
Do a nice job.
So.
The last two years, they did what, Wizard of Oz and Alice in Wonderland for the two productions, so, yeah.
Tremendously appreciated. Subcommittee updates, there are none. There have been no subcommittee meetings in the last week, but coming up, we have a very busy.
Tomorrow.
Busy day tomorrow.
A big day tomorrow.
Busy couple of weeks with subcommittee meetings and events. Tomorrow at twelve thirty in the Supertens Conference Room, the athletic subcommittee. At four thirty, we will dedicate the main corridor that connects the middle school, the high school and to the administrative, central administrative offices. We'll be dedicating that in Charlie Jones' name tomorrow. There'll be a ceremony at four thirty. Five thirty tomorrow is the secondary school building committee meeting here. NOR Cam Board of Directors meets on Thursday at seven at Damon Tavern. Who's on that?
I'd have to go to that then. Scott's going. He should probably tell me, huh?
Do I have to go to that?
He should probably tell me that.
Policy Subcommittee is, as I said.
Enjoy.
I'm glad I'm not on this committee anymore. It's at June twenty-seventh at seven AM.
Seven AM, bright and early.
I would be sleeping through that. Finance planning team is August fourth at eight fifteen AM in Supertens Conference Room.